Good evening. Thank you again for attending. As Ms. Blison said, the reason why we're having this meeting is we want to update our parents and our community on where we're at in regards to our conference affiliation. There will be no action taken tonight. The Board will be taking comments at the end of the meeting, and we'll have a discussion about this next week, where we'll be on the agenda to approve switching to the Central State Aid next Monday, the 17th, at our scheduled board meeting. And the reason why this seems expedited is because if we're going to switch conferences, we are on a little bit of a time crunch. As I get into my presentation, the Central State Aid just notified us about three and a half weeks ago about the possibility of coming back to the Central State Aid. For us to get out of the Apollo Conference, we have to notify them by July 3rd. There is a minimum two-year wait, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, but if we do not notify them by July 3rd, if we're going to switch, we'd be committed for an additional year. So that's why everything kind of has to be expedited just a little bit. Again, the form of this is not a question and answer. I want to make a presentation, update everyone on where we're at, and at the end, we will solicit comments. If you have any questions, please feel free to talk to or email any administrator or Board member later this week, and we'll try to give you the best answers that we can. We are just finishing our fourth year in the Apollo Conference. This is my second year as superintendent. When I first started on July 1, I was made aware of the conference situation here at Lincoln. I was made aware of, and I'll be honest with you, that when the decision was made to switch from the Central State Aid to the Apollo, that a lot of parents and a lot of members of the community were not happy about that change. So when I started, I spent the first year with Coach Alexander as our athletic director, and we did make some inquiries about what are some other possibilities of conferences that are out there. We did keep line of communication with the Central State open. In fact, January of my first year, I did send a letter just to gauge if there was an interest from them to having Lincoln back. And at that point, the answer was no. There was no interest in Lincoln being accepted back to the Central State Aid. We also looked around at some other local conferences. The Middle Line Night Conference, which if you look at the size wise of the school, would have been another good fit, but they had no interest in expanding their conference. Lincoln was an original member of the Big 12 Conference. The Big 12 is too big for us now, and you would still have driving distance issues. I was a superintendent at Lexington. We were in the Heart of Illinois Conference. Wonderful conference. I would personally love to be in that conference, but Lincoln is too big for that conference. That would not be an option. So we were left back with the Central State Aid. And as I talk about this, I know you think that this has been done on the drop of a dime. Over the last two years, we've spent a lot of time looking at what's best for our students. Everything that goes along with being part of a conference. If we make this move, and I say yes, because again, we're not going to vote on this until next week, we'd be moving back for one reason. Because the Apollo Conference, if you look at the size of the schools, it would be a perfect fit, but there's one aspect which will not change, and that is the location, and the distance, and the driving. That is the sole reason why we're going to be looking to go back to the Central State Aid. That is one factor you cannot change. When you look at the schools in the Apollo Conference, you're looking at the Long Drive, Charleston, Mattoon, Effingham, and this year, Teotoplis was added to the conference. And if you're not familiar with Teotoplis, it's just on that side of Effingham. It is hard for our students to be able to get out of school early, so we're taking them out of class. They have at least an hour and a half to two-hour bus ride, getting back anywhere from 11:00 to midnight. I do know for a fact that Board members over the last four years have gotten texts or snapshot pictures of buses rolling in at midnight. That is not good for our students. It's not just our athletes. We have a lot of coaches that teach, and it's a school. That's what you want. You want to have your teachers coach, because they have a relationship with the students. It's not good for our teachers to be pulled out of class also. So not only are the athletes missing out in part of education, the students that the teachers are having to leave class for, they're missing out also. They're also getting back late at night. It is hard when you're getting back at midnight. And I can talk about that from a personal experience. Just this year alone, I've made the drive to Charleston four times, Effingham three times, Mattoon three times, and Teotoplis. It's not a fun drive. It's not easy. It was easier for me, because after the game was over, I was just able to get into my car and leave. I didn't have to wait around for people to get dressed. I also didn't have to worry about studying for a test the next day. Did not have to worry about finishing my homework. The last two years, the school has provided charter buses for those long trips, but even though it's a little bit more comfortable. It is not easy to study in the dark on your way back when you're exhausted already. So if we make this move to the Central State Aid, I just want to emphasize, the purpose of this is strictly for our kids. It is tough, as I was talking a little while ago. We do our schedule. We cannot do our schedule for our students based on them getting out early. We cannot necessarily schedule students to have study hall at the end of the day, depending on what class that they have to take. It just does not work. As you look up here, you have five Board members. All five of these Board members and the one that is not here, they were not on the Board when this decision was made several years ago to switch to the Apollo Conference. And four of these members, they've had children be a part of the Apollo Conference. So as a parent, they know what it's like to have their children get home at 11:00, 11:30, 12:00. They can tell you it's not easy. It is not easy for a parent to make it down to Effingham before 30 for a game. And if you've never driven to Effingham, please do at least one time. You will see, there is no easy way to get to Effingham. It is not fun. It's also not fun, I'm sure, for the other schools having to make the drive. I just remember particularly this year with our girls' basketball game, we were playing Mattoon. Near the end of the game, it started to ice. The game did not end until 9:30. And I know there's no way they got home before midnight, if not 12:30. I'm sure they did not enjoy that. Their parents are not able to come watch their kids. We're not able to go drive to watch our kids. And there's something to also be said when you have a little bit of history. I know the tradition that Lincoln is also an original founder of the Central State Aid College, of the Central State Aid Conference. We have those little rivalries with the other schools. I know our community enjoys three-filled lanes for coming here. Gym would be packed. If you haven't been to a game for the last couple of years, our attendance has dropped. There just isn't that, I'll say, enthusiasm that it used to be. And that's something I think has been missing. Because again, we all have school pride, and I think this is something, if we were able to go back to the Central State Aid, we can get back into. When I came to Lincoln, I was very aware of the tradition that we had in basketball. I was looking forward to coming and having the gym packed, because one thing I have found out in the last two years, we have one of the biggest gyms around. We have one of the best gyms around. So a few games that first year, we actually had a couple of games that were packed. There's nothing that beats that. There's nothing that atmosphere that it has. So that also has been missing for the last couple of years. If we make the switch to the Central State Aid, I realize that this is not necessarily going to be a perfect fit for all sports. There's one sport that would probably benefit the least, and that is our football. They're the ones that probably are not looking forward to this the most. But I do want to explain, we do have hope if we do accept to go back to the Central State Aid. Currently, in the Central State Aid, there are 10 schools, so there are nine football games. So every week, you have nine games scheduled. Every game is a conference. We would make the 11th school, so there's going to have to be some give and take on the Central State Aid, what they're going to do with conference schedule. Our hope would be they could either look maybe doing like an east-west, having a few crossover games, and then schedule some non-conference games. That's what we would like. That's what we would hope for. But that is, would have to be something that would be determined going forward. But I do realize with football, it's going to be a little bit tougher. The timeline of when everything could possibly happen, as I said earlier, we are in a little bit of a time crunch. If we give the notice to the Apollo Conference, the earliest, the earliest that we could possibly get back to the Central State Aid could be for the 2022-2023 school year. Next year, we are committed to the Apollo Conference either way. As I made Board aware, several weeks ago after the Central State Aid, made comments that we might, they might look at us. There is a chance that the Apollo could keep us in there for another two years. Again, our hope would be, one thing we have to work with both the Central State Aid and the Apollo, would be if, possibility that we could stay in the Apollo for two years for football, and then possibly look to add the other sports into the Central State Aid for the 22-23 school year. That is our best scenario, but there would be a possibility that all sports might not start for another two years, if this is approved next week. So I just want to make everyone aware. Making the change to a conference is not always an easy decision. What we have to do as administrators, as a school Board, is we have to look at the big picture. What is going to be best for all of our students? We cannot look at each individual sport. What's best for this sport? What's best for that sport? We have to look at what's best for kids. And as I said earlier, what's driving this is we've got to get our kids to stay in school. We've got to get our kids back earlier. That's the bottom line. That's what we're looking at. I've always based my recommendations, my decision, on what's best for kids, and we will continue to do that. I know I've thrown a lot at you this evening. Like I said, this all started a couple of weeks ago, when the Central State Aid notified us that there could be a possibility that Lincoln might be accepted back. The athletic directors of the Central State Aid, they voted and approved us unanimously to come back. They asked if I sent a letter to the principals of the Central State Aid requesting official admission to the Central State Aid, which I did, and the principals approved unanimously. That is why we're bringing this to you. We do want to hear your comments, your thoughts, your suggestions. But again, remember, this is not going to be question and answer. Feel free to make any comment. We'll welcome you to come up to the microphone. I would like you to please state your name, just so we can get it for the record, and then please keep your comments till less than five minutes, so we might have a lot of other people that would like to speak. So that is where we're at, at this moment in time. Again, we want to be transparent with where we're at as a conference, as going forward with the conference, and we're going to keep an open mind. But again, this will be on the agenda next week. So at this point, I would invite anyone that would like to say anything, please come forward. Thank you.
Do you care if I take this off while I speak? My name is Lynn Bates. I'm an LCHS grad, Lincoln with my family and my children. I want to thank you for the well-thought-out presentation, answered some of the questions I had. So I just wanted to speak in favor of the conference change tonight and give you some of my thoughts on that. You've hit on some of them. I will do my utmost to keep it under five minutes, but you know, it's not always easy, I guess. Two of the reasons that I want to give you tonight that I think are of the utmost importance are the education of our students and the safety of our students. And I think that you've hit on a lot of the educational points that I thought of before tonight, and one of those points is, you know, what, what is the purpose of the school? What is the purpose of the school district? And I think if you look at your very own agenda, it says inspiring each student to be a successful lifelong learner. And I mean, that's what we're here for. That's what we're supposed to be doing. And it's a worthy cause, you know, and, and schools exist to do that. And luckily in Lincoln, we've had the, we've had the history of being able to do that for a long period of time. We've been lucky. And as a part of that, as being a lifelong learner, as being well-rounded, things like that, extracurricular activities are important. I think we can all sit here and agree that they're an important part of growing and learning and doing everything and becoming productive citizens. But in my opinion, and I, I think most will agree, those extracurricular activities cannot detract from the purpose of education. And I think what we've gotten ourselves into with the conference that we're in now, I think there are situations where it does. I think, you know, the distances that these students are asked to be tra, to travel to extracurricular events is tremendous. You know, we're, we're taking kids out of school early, like you said, we're, we're bringing them back late, you know, midnight, 1:00 in the morning on, on school nights. I can't stay up that late. I used to be able to, but I can't anymore. You know, that, that doesn't help them educationally or academically or anything of that nature. Yeah, they could probably do some work on the school bus, but that's tough. I mean, you, you get in a school bus with 20, 30 kids, do you really want to do school work? Do you really want to study? Even if you do, can you? I mean, can, can you read on a school bus? You know, you're traveling roads that are two-lane highways. It, it may not even be possible if you wanted to. But, you know, putting these kids in a school bus for five hours, getting them home late, I, I just don't think that that puts them in the best position to perform at their best. You know, if they're not rested, they can't perform at their best, and we're just not giving them the tools to succeed. Which, you know, hopefully this isn't the case, but I, I think that could potentially put students in a position to say, well, do I have to pick now? Do I have to do my extracurricular activity, or do I have to do school? Is it one or the other? And, and we don't want to do that, I don't think. And the other point is safety. And, you know, I've had a concern about this ever since we switched. You guys are well aware, our world is changing. You know, you're doing everything you can to keep our kids safe. Schools across the nation have done that. We're no different here, you know, for better or worse. And I really do not believe that putting our students, our coaches, our volunteers on buses to travel two-lane highways, you know, sometimes at night, sometimes during questionable weather conditions like you spoke about, I don't personally believe that prioritizes the safety. It would be a tragedy if something were to happen that we could avoid, and this is a way to avoid it. You know, I'm not, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that it's going to be completely unavoidable if we change conferences. That's unrealistic. But when you're talking about Lincoln, Illinois, there's a plethora of cities around here within a 30-to-40-mile highway drive that we can compete with, you know, and, and that, that helps everyone, I think. You know, that interstate drive is much safer, it's much quicker, and, you know, why not? This, this is not a anti-Apollo Conference stance by any means. I agree with you, you know, I think it's a good conference, but the, the distances simply make it impractical, in my opinion. This is just a common sense plea to the Board to make a change, and I think this is a good change. You know, we have a history here, and I think this would be a tremendous, tremendous opportunity for this school. I want to thank you guys for doing it this way, letting us be heard, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Lana Hollinger, and I am the Student Body President of Class of 2021. And I just want to say thank you for the amazing presentation of the points that you've shown out for us. Go back to the CSA. I'm in favor, of course, for making this conference switch. I just want to say that I was, my freshman year was the first year that we came to the Apollo Conference, and it's not, that hasn't been easy. I just want to point out, one of the times my junior year, we were playing, I think it was Mohammed Seymour, and the next day, we were supposed to have finals. And my grandfather gave me a little pocket flashlight, so I could sit on the bus and kind of just go through my studies. That's hard. That's really hard. You can't expect a student to excel in the classroom if they're not given that time to study, meaning especially those late nights, drive to Effingham, to Teotoplis. There were some times when I had all this stuff to do, and I couldn't get it done on the bus. And especially when you're on the bus, and we're, this new age of technology, you're doing a lot of things online. My English composition class, it was all online. You can't just sit down on the bus and write on a pencil. It's, the Wi-Fi's not out there, it's just, it's hard to get a connection. I mean, you're going out to Charleston, and, or you're going to Effingham, and you're on a country road. It's, it makes it so, so difficult. And I just want to say thank you for the presentation, and I hope you guys remember what I had to say. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynn Paulus. I am the parent of three girls that have gone through Lincoln High School. Two of them were able to play in the Central State Aid Conference, and my youngest is a senior this year and played all four years in the Apollo Conference. So I'm very familiar, as a parent, of student athletes, and I use the word "student athletes", we are athlete students, to recommend or, I mean, support your decision, or hopefully your decision to move back to the Central State Aid. Apollo Conference has some very talented girls' teams from top to bottom in all three sports that my kids play, volleyball, basketball, softball. Central State Aid has terrific talent in that conference. The biggest thing I noticed when we left Central State Aid was our exposure to our student athletes, from the media coverage to just the exposure to scouts and individuals that, that know the sport. Because once we left Central State Aid, it may not have been intentional, but it seemed like the city of Springfield pretty much stopped covering, especially girl's sports. They continued to cover the boys' basketball program, which is great, but if you look at the girl's sports, once we left Springfield in the Central State Aid, that coverage went by the wayside, which hurts those individuals, those girls, that want to go on and pursue their dreams in college and have that extra exposure. So for that reason, I, I highly encourage you to move back to the Central State Aid. The other issue, I mean, several have already talked about it, is the education. Fortunately, I'd say our guidance counselors have worked with those student athletes the best they could to get those late afternoon classes to be classes that don't have a participation requirement, or it could be a study hall or a PE, but that's not always achievable. So those students are missing prime education time to go on and succeed in life. And the other aspect is just the school morale, the school enthusiasm. You talked about the rivalries in the Central State Aid. There's some great rivalries there. We don't see that as much in the Apollo Conference, because those students aren't traveling the two hours to come to Lincoln, or our students aren't traveling the two hours to go there to create that rivalry and that school morale. So that's another point to consider. And the last one is a community point that I'd like to, to express, is that we wanted to do this for the students, but if you think about it, think of the number of fans, parent, parents, grandparents that come from Central Aid schools to attend the games. I mean, it's two, three, four times what we'd get for an Apollo Conference game. Where do you think those people are going when the game is done, or before the game? They're visiting our restaurants, our gas stations, our, our stores. So they're bringing in more additional dollars into our community and making our school and our community a better place. So for those reasons, I really encourage you to vote in favor of making the switch back to Central State Aid. Thank you.
I've been a lifelong resident here in Lincoln, and I want to thank Lynn, the other speakers, they've hit on so many points. I want to give you some history. I was on the advisory committee here in the 80s. I was a student here in the 60s. My father and my husband played in the original Big 12. I got my yearbooks out today from the 1920s and looked at all the stats. I was on the Board when we left the Big 12. We were hated in the Big 12 because we were winners. People came in from Rantoul, Champaign, Danville. They came in round 10, came around to the school, and they didn't even know we had a town, let alone we excelled in volleyball, baseball, basketball, all of the sports. And we're lucky that we have one high school, because that has made a winning right for all of us. The Decaters, the Purias, the Springfields, all of them have different schools now. When the Big 12 was originally, my husband played in the 50s, when there was only 12, with 12 schools, and it was all over the state. So, but I wanted to tell you why we dropped out of the Big 12. It was travel, the girls going to Danville and Mattoon, and the reason we joined the Central State Aid, many of you remember Jerry Overby. He was superintendent here in 1985, and he lived on Middle Lane, where Joan Brown is now, and he watched the kids play soccer over at Lincoln College. And he came to a board meeting, and he said, "We got to have soccer for the girls." He said, "That's going to be a sport of the future." We visited Puria, we visited Bloomington, and we decided to form a conference. I see Tony Schilling. No? Yeah, I saw him someplace. Yeah, he was on the first of 1994. And I went to meetings. I was pretty lucky. I got to work for my husband, so I got to have my own hours. So I went to meetings, and it took us probably four years to convince this community to drop out of the Big 12, because it was tradition, and we were known in the Big 12. But Springfield, they had the best golf courses, they had the best tennis facilities. They're also, they're talking about now opening up the Armory. I don't know if they're going to play sports there. But we played at the Civic Center, and we had so many state employees, they were able to go to the games. I'm old, and a lot of my friends tell me, they don't go to their grand children's games. They listen at home on the radio or the computer, because they don't want to go to Effingham or Charleston. So I want to thank all of you for your time. I know you're devoted, or you wouldn't be on this school. You don't get paid a lot, but you have some really good benefits. And I want to thank you all for your time, and I want you to know that we just didn't decide. It took us almost 10 years to find a fit, and that was the Central State Aid. And hopefully, you'll study that, and we can go back. Okay? Thank you.
My name is Jared Brown. The last time I spoke to a crowd in this gym was when I gave the commencement speech on that stage almost 20 years ago. I'll try to keep my remarks a little bit shorter this time around. The four-year experiment with the Apollo Conference is when exactly how most of us thought it would. People that were pushing for this move-
But Springfield, they had the best golf courses, they had the best tennis facilities. They're also, they're talking about now opening up the Armory. I don't know if they're going to play sports there. But we played at the Civic Center, and we had so many state employees, they were able to go to the games. I'm old, and a lot of my friends tell me, they don't go to the grand children's games. They listen at home on the radio or the computer because they don't want to go to Effingham or Charleston. So I want to thank all of you for your time. I know you're devoted, or you wouldn't be on this school boat. You don't get paid a lot, but you have some really good benefits. And I want to thank you all for your time. And I want you to know that we just didn't decide. It took us almost 10 years to find a fit, and that was the Central State Aid. And hopefully you'll study that and we can go back. Okay?
My name's Jared Brown. The last time I spoke to a crowd in this gym was when I gave the commencement speech on that stage almost 20 years ago. I'll try to keep my remarks a little bit shorter this time around. The four-year experiment with the Apollo Conference is when exactly how most of us thought it would. People that were pushing for this move had their own motives, none of which had anything to do with academic opportunities. The students, parents, coaches, fans, and community were all negatively affected by the move. With a quick Google search, I found the following information. Travel times in the CSA average 41 minutes, an average distance of 34 miles. Travel times in the Apollo Conference, 1 hour 27 minutes, an average distance of 76 miles. It more than doubled the amount of travel in conference games. The furthest school in the CSA is Jacksonville, a 70-mile drive away. Again, the average distance of the Apollo Conference opponents is 76. Apart from Jacksonville, every other CSA school is closer than all Apollo Conference schools. Imagine for a second the girls' basketball team playing an away game at T-Town in the middle of the week. They have to leave class around 2:00 or 2:30, missing the last class period. They travel a two-lane road on a bus for over two hours to a small town over 100 miles away. They play the games, then head home on the same bus in the dark on the same two-lane road and make it back sometime around 11 o'clock, unless they go into overtime. This is in the middle of the week. What if a student athlete has a calculus test tomorrow that they need to study for? Have you ever tried to study math on a bus full of teenage girls? Or better yet, have you ever tried to study calculus after midnight? This conference makes the life of student athletes far more difficult than the CSA. Also, the level of competition for many sports has gone down in the Apollo. With less competitive conference games, the teams are more likely to be less tested when the state tournament rolls around. Playing in the CSA against some good schools gave student athletes a place to showcase their abilities. For those select few lucky enough to go on to play at the next level, it gives them a lot better chance to be seen by scouts. I doubt there will be a whole lot of college scouts in the Lincoln versus Charleston football game, but how many scouts showed up to see D1 talent at the games against SHG or Rochester? Is that going to be a tougher game to win? Sure. But to be challenged by the best is what sports is all about. I looked and looked for an inspirational quote from Michael Jordan or Peyton Manning, where they talked about winning games or beating teams that were less competitive. I didn't find one. What I did find were these. Michael Jordan said, "I failed over and over and over again in my life, and that is why I succeed." Or this, "Success is not final. Failure is not fatal. Is it, it is the courage to continue that counts." Sports instill, drive, and passion in these student athletes. They develop the will to overcome adversity. That's something that this generation needs now more than ever. Success in sports at this level is not measured in wins and losses. It's measured by what is gained from competition. Playing on a team that went 4-16 versus a team that went 16-4 makes no difference in the grand scheme of life. Students aren't putting their bag average on college applications, and they aren't asked their career win-loss record in football for the first full-time job. What might be more important to the students in the long run is having their parents or grandparents, friends or classmates, able to come cheer them on in more games. Also, the ability, the ability to study a few more hours for Dick Bicknell's chemistry test might be more beneficial than two-hour bus ride home. I urge the school board to use some common sense this time around and not focus on a few influential voices pushing us to a conference that doesn't benefit the students in the long run.